I'm going to, just so I can see over there. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen and students. Thank you for coming. This meeting is a public session of the Council Rock Board of School Directors. This meeting is being recorded by the Council Rock School District and may be recorded by members of the audience. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have from Newtown Elementary School, the Newtown Elementary Sound, and Ms. Benedict is directing. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Benedict and it's been my pleasure to teach elementary, classroom music, and chorus at Newtown Elementary this year. Tonight I'm honored to stand before you with the Newtown Sound, a select musical ensemble consisting of students in grades five and six. Newtown Sound is one of many examples of the excellent musical opportunities offered to our elementary students. Music is such a force in Council Rock and the earliest foundations for a lifelong love of musical learning and enjoyment are set at the elementary level. Imagine what is possible as the students grow and move into middle school and the high school programs. None of that growth would be possible without the strength of the elementary music program. And that same growth would not be possible without the support of our administration and our school board. I'd like to extend a special thank you to Dr. Fraser, Dr. Elliott, Mr. Desko, and all of our administrators and directors for their support of music education in Council Rock. I would also like to thank our principal at Newtown Elementary, Mr. Kevin King, for encouraging our music students both tonight and at all of our performances throughout the year. And of course, we thank the members of our school board for allowing us the opportunity to perform this evening and for emphasizing the importance of music in our schools. That further ado, it's my pleasure to present the Newtown Sound, who will lead us in our national anthem, followed by a performance of that Dixie Land Sound.
(Music) 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 (Music)
Wait, hold on a second. Wait, Mr. Grup had a great idea, which is you all hold on if you don't mind for just a couple minutes and we'll be right down. We're gonna honor somebody special from the school.
Newtown. Mr. Ted Qualley, who has graced us fortunately with his presence here this evening, is the
So while you're here, we'll jump out of order with the agenda.
National Winner of the Cintas Corporation's National Janitor of the Year Contest.
Dr. Fraser.
So, as Mr. Tate said, we're going slightly out of order here this evening. And Mr. Qualley... Mr. Qualley is a maintenance specialist with us here in the school district. Boys and girls, we normally have a couple other activities that happen and then we And tonight just happens to be the first school board meeting since he has won this have what's called the superintendent's report. wonderful, wonderful award. And part of the superintendent's report tonight is recognition of someone that you And so it's our pleasure as a school board and as a cabinet team, Mr. Qualley, to be all know well. You know who that might be? able to recognize you here this evening.
Mr. Qualley.
So, we want to express our gratitude and express our appreciation for the wonderful Mr. Qualley, that's right, that's right. job that you do on a day-in, day-out basis. Mr. Qualley, it's really out of appreciation for your professionalism that you display every single day. It's out of appreciation for your excellence. And perhaps most of all, it's just the personalism that you bring to the job every day with all the people with whom you interact and probably most impressively, with the students.
That's what makes it happen.
That is what makes it happen. So, Mr. Qualley, we don't have a hashtag to give you tonight like the school has already done or any police escort into the school like you've already received or... But what we do offer you is our gratitude, our respect. We're most humbled by you, by your work, by your professionalism and all that you do every single day. So, congratulations to you. Allow us to extend that to you as we know so many have already done before us and now it's our turn to do the same. Congratulations.
Do you want to take a picture with them? They're surrounding too.
Yeah.
Let me just move around. the district also, I believe, receives funds from Cintas Corporation in his honor, which will, I think, $5,000 comes. So, our appreciation not only to Qualley but to Cintas for recognizing Mr. Qualley and his service to the community. Mrs. Grace? Could we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks? Here. Mr. Block?
Mr. Block is traveling on business.
Mr. Bylock?
Here.
Dr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Grup?
Present.
Mrs. McKessy?
Here.
Mrs. Thomas?
Mrs. Thomas is present.
Here.
Dr. Thorwart?
Here.
Mr. Tate?
Here.
And we'll move on to the Student Advisory Board from Council Rock High School North. Ms. McCarthy, hi, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. So, as summer approaches, we are here for the very last time and we're all in the mood because of the weather. So, I'd like to introduce my panel of students. And as usual, they've switched it up again, yet again. So, we have our two bookends seniors. Beginning this evening will be Kristen Fern, who is representing Middle Bucks Institute of Technology, followed by ninth grader Veda Alam, tenth grader Jake Cohen, and Hadley Grunman is both Finn Thompson and herself. Kristen?
Hello, everyone. I'm Kristen Fern and I'm a senior at Council Rock High School North. I'm also a third-year student in the Medical and Health Professions Program at Middle Bucks Institute of Technology. Currently, the Middle Bucks Executive Council recognizes students who represent the school and their program of study participating in skill competitions this school year. The event provided the opportunity to meet the families of these talented students who have played an important role by supporting their students' interest to attend MBIT, to pursue a career pathway, and to thank their teachers for imparting knowledge and helping these students to prepare for their competitions. Middle Bucks Institute of Technology's Philanthropy Today Club received grants from the Norman Rabb Foundation in the amount of $5,000 and the Heenan Grant in the amount of $5,000. The purpose of the grants was to provide donations to nonprofit organizations, make a difference in the community. The Rabb family and Mrs. Bernadette Heenan personally met with the students at a breakfast held at Middle Bucks Institute of Technology on May 12th to present the grants. The cosmetology students traveled to Willow Dell Elementary School to help their children participating in the school's production of The Lion King with their hair and makeup for the show. The actors looked amazing and our students enjoyed the opportunity to use their creative talents. Middle Bucks Gardens, our student-operated garden center, is now open to the public forum 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. during the school week. The garden center is stocked full of plants, flowers, hanging baskets, and herbs. Stop by and see the beautiful items for sale. Finally, our annual senior recognition ceremony will be held on Monday, June 5th at 6:30 p.m. in the William Tenet High School Auditorium. Please mark your calendars and plan to attend this event to acknowledge and congratulate the class of 2017. This will be my last school board meeting report before I graduate high school. I have enjoyed being able to represent Middle Bucks Institute of Technology at the Council Rock School Board meetings. Thank you for this opportunity.
Kristen, thank you and good luck.
Thanks. Good evening, everybody. My name is Veda Alam. It is so hard to believe that my freshman year will be coming to a close in less than a month. It seems like this school year has gone by in the blink of an eye. Today I will be talking about clubs and the freshman class. The clubs I will speak about are FBLA, Science Fair, Diversity Advisory Committee, and our National Honor Societies. Future Business Leaders of America, or better known as FBLA, has once again had a very successful year. We had a large number of students that moved on to states. At states, we had a huge success. Overall, Council Rock North was recognized and honored for being the eighth-largest FBLA chapter in the state, competing with over 300 schools. Individually, five students from North were nationally qualified. Additionally, several of our students competed with hundreds of other students and succeeded by winning the top-10 award. Also, the club is in the process of its elections for the 2017-2018 school year. Overall, FBLA came out on top yet again. The Science Fair Club had a huge success. They took 35 students from North to represent CRN at the Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Sciences. This competition happened at Penn State University. Five of our students placed second and the other 30 placed first. Of those 30 students, four students received a perfect score. On top of that, some of our students even received scholarships to Penn State University. The Diversity Advisory Committee, or DAC, made a very important move at CRN. DAC presented the outstanding and very influential speaker, Mikey Fallon. Mr. Fallon refers to himself as a psychologist, performer, and poet. He interprets problems that happen every day and hopes to bring people together to talk about these problems and solve them. After the assembly, all North students debriefed in their next class, having the opportunity to talk to their fellow classmates about this. This assembly definitely left people thinking and talking. As it is the end of the year, our National Honor Societies have been very busy. Several Honor Societies had their inductions in the past few weeks. NHS just recently had the famous volleyball tournament. Ro Kappa Honor Society has just finished their baby shower drive for wives and wives with husbands in the military. This was a great way to honor our soldiers and their families. Finally, the freshman class has also been very busy lately. We have just had our class elections for the 2017-2018 school year. Students either ran for reelection or we had new candidates pursue the opportunity. Overall, we had 16 students run for office. We've had a great freshman year and now it's time to start planning for sophomore year. It is so hard to believe that this year is almost over, but it truly has been a great year as well as a tiresome year. Thank you for your time and I hope to see all of you next year. Here's Jake.
Good evening. I'm glad to be back again for the last time until summer vacation. Although we're looking forward to the long break ahead of us, our lives have been going at North. First off, my class of 2019 is having our class elections next Friday, May 26th. There's heavy competition, but I know we will get great new officers that will keep our class on the path to success. Sack and Baskin has also had a very honorable and successful time as they're wrapping up activities for the school year. After rehearsing for over 80 hours since I last spoke here, their final project, The Secret Garden, played from April 27th to the 30th and was a major success. Just recently, they celebrated with their annual club. They had their banquet at the Cock and Bull Restaurant, at which they honored many members and inducted 12 of whom into the National Thespien Society. They have also announced their 2017-2018 school year season, which includes The Diviners by Jim Leonard, Noises Off by Michael Frain, and the musical The Mystery of Edwin Drew by Rupert Holmes. This will be their 50th year as Council Rock's official theater club and I'm sure they're gonna set the bar very high. Unto the sports, the Council Rock North Athletics team is at the end of their spring season, with teams qualifying for district playoffs. First, the North baseball team is heading to the SOL National Conference Playoffs with an 8-6 record and 10-10 overall. Their first playoff game will be on Monday, May 22nd against Council Rock South at home. The North girls softball team is also heading into the SOL National Conference Playoffs with an 8-4 record. Their first game is also gonna be on Monday, May 22nd. The boys tennis team is also another SOL National League champion and both singles and doubles are heading into states next week. Boys track and field are also another SOL National Conference champions and possible state qualifiers seeding in scoring position include Ryan Campbell, Brian Keller, and Tim Haas. Furthermore, the girls track and field has also had also had a successful SOL National Conference championship on May 17th. The girls high jump winner was Kate Donnelly and the girls long jump winner was Maurice Essieu. Furthermore, the boys volleyball team is doing very well this season, coming in second place for the SOL North National League, but will be continuing into playoffs for the 10-2 season. Lastly, the North boys lacrosse team made the SOL National Conference Playoffs, but they ended their season after the first playoff game. That's all the news I have to share tonight, but before I hand the mic down, I would like to say thank you for giving me the honor to report to you for the past two years. It's been very rewarding for me to take on this position and I look forward to continuing as an upperclassman next fall. Thank you so much.
So, first I am going to be reading Finn's speech. Hi, everyone. It's been a great year and I'm sure we're all excited for summer. In academics, AP exams were administered during the first two weeks of May. Here are some facts that I can share with you. 345 students took exams and in total, North students took a total of 644 AP exams. 176 students took more than one exam and 34 took over four exams. Clearly, North students went above and beyond this year and I am sure they will eagerly await their scores in July. This week and next week, Keystone exams are being administered in Algebra I, Literature and Biology. Over 1,100 exams will be administered, with 420 of the literature and biology and 260 for algebra. The vast majority of exams will be administered during a special schedule, with students not taking the exams expected to arrive at school at 10:05 instead of 7:33. These exams are statewide assessments that provide information to both students and their families, as well as the school district, about how successfully students have mastered this important curriculum. And for the rest of us, it's been great getting to sleep in for a change. SATs and SAT subject tests were administered at North on May 6th and will also be administered on June 3rd. My class is beginning the college application process and this culminated at the College Fair, where hundreds of students came with their families to explore dozens of different booths and colleges around the country. But my class is doing more than preparing for college. On April 21st, we had our junior prom at the Hyatt Regency in Princeton. The event was a huge success, with hundreds of juniors attending and everyone loved the music and food. It's been a great year and I'm excited to see you in the fall. Hello, all. I hope you've been able to get outside and enjoy the nice weather. With the school year quickly coming to an end, the music department is gearing up for their spring concerts. This past weekend, both the choir and the orchestra competed in Music in the Parks in Hershey. While the weather wasn't what we had hoped for, each group left having won first place in each of their respective divisions. Junior Mike Yost also walked away being named the top soloist in the whole competition. The choir has their Pyramid Concert with the elementary and middle schools tomorrow, May 19th. This type of concert allows musicians of all skill levels to play together, to see and experience what it would be like if they were to continue their music through high school, hopefully encouraging more kids to continue to play. The band will also be performing at the Memorial Day Parade in Newtown and at North's graduation ceremony on June 13th. The orchestra will have their last concert on May 24th and will also be performing at the senior award night. At the end of the month is our Small Ensembles Concert, where groups from all of the music programs get to showcase their talents on a night specifically dedicated to those smaller groups of students. In SEB News, we had our last official SEB event at the end of March, which was Rockathon. Thanks to the school community, we raised over $22,000 for Camp Can Do, a summer camp for children living or who have been affected by cancer. The event ran very smoothly and we are so thankful for everyone who came out and helped to make the event a success. Today, we had our SEB elections for the 2017-18 school year, where we elected the members of the board for next year. And results came in just a mere two hours ago and the new vice, or the new president is Izzy Durkin, vice president is Liv Guantello, secretary Caroline Meckelvove, treasurer is Claudio Verzakowski, and public relations is Grace Kane. Each year, the freshmen of SEB are put to the task to run the Memorial Day service at North. This year, we are inviting all students who plan to be involved in the service in any way, going to an academy, being in the ROTC, or signing up for combat, as well as those who have served or are currently serving. The ceremony will be held on May 26th. The senior class is getting excited for our prom that will be held this Saturday at the Crystal T Room in Philadelphia. The theme is "A Night to Remember" and with over 450 tickets sold, I'm sure that it will be a spectacular event. Last, but certainly not least, we cannot wait for graduation and the end of the year activities like the senior barbecue and senior recognition night. As our final months as Council Rock students draw to a close, we're looking back on all the wonderful years that we've had at North, but are looking forward to see what the future has in store for us. Before I end, I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for the opportunity to update you on Council Rock North for these past four years. It has been an honor. And for those of you who were here five years ago for my sister's final SAB performance, you will be lucky because I will not be singing tonight. Instead, I have a little treat to say thank you for those past four years, their salted caramel, um, salted caramel chocolate chip cookie bars. And even though I cannot wait for graduation, I must say that being able to take my name plaque at the end of the night is something that I've been looking forward to since my freshman year. Thank you.
Hadley, thanks very much.
Thank you.
And yes, you get to take your name plate. You too, Kristen. And Jake, Veda, thank you for your presentations all year long. They've been informative and enjoyable. And please tell Finn I said the same. Good luck. You need to tell us where you're going, those of you who are here.
Um, you have to go. I'm going to Boston State University and then hopefully after another two years, I want to transfer to Boston University. And then I will be playing volleyball at the University of Chicago. I'm very excited.
Good luck.
Awesome, thank you.
All the best to you.
This ceremony will be held on May 26th. The senior class is getting excited for our prom that will be held this Saturday at the Crystal T Room in Philadelphia. The theme is "A Night to Remember", and with over 450 tickets sold, I'm sure that it will be a spectacular event. Last, but certainly not least, we cannot wait for graduation and the end of the year activities, like the senior barbecue and senior recognition night. As our final months as Council Rock students draw to a close, we're looking back on all the wonderful years that we've had at North, but are looking forward to see what the future has in store for us. Before I end, I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for the opportunity to update you on Council Rock North for these past four years. It has been an honor. And for those of you who were here five years ago for my sister's final SAB performance, you will be lucky because I will not be singing tonight. Instead, I have a little treat to say thank you for those past four years. They're salted caramel, um, salted caramel chocolate chip cookie bars. And even though I cannot wait for graduation, I must say that being able to take my name plaque at the end of the night is something that I've been looking forward to since my freshman year.
Hadley, thanks very much.
Thank you.
And yes, you get to take your name plate. You too, Kristen. And Jake, Veda, thank you for your presentations all year long. They've been informative and enjoyable. And please tell Finn I said the same. Good luck.
You need to tell us where you're going, those of you who are here.
I'm going to Bucks County College, and then hopefully after another two years, I want to transfer to Columbia University.
And then I will be playing volleyball at the University of Chicago. I'm very excited.
Good luck.
Awesome. Thank you.
All the best to you. Great job. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Fraser, please.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. And Mr. Fredrickson, while you're there, could we move this desk? I think you're doing it, so we're going to be, uh, we're going to be in good shape. We have, as part of the superintendent's report this evening, a number of presentations to make. You saw one of them already. The first item on the superintendent's report is actually to acknowledge that earlier this evening, immediately prior to the start of the board meeting, we had a reception honoring our retirees for this year. We have a total of 43 retirees this year, with cumulative years of experience totaling 959. Nine hundred fifty-nine years of experience from 43 different retirees. Commented earlier to them that they say that no one is irreplaceable. I beg to differ. When you look at 43 people in total for 959 years, you don't replace that kind of wisdom. You don't replace that kind of experience. So what we have here in the center, thanks to Mr. Bauer and Mr. Fredrickson, and I want to thank Mr. Grubb for this because when he saw the list of retirees, he, uh, he sent me an email because he recognized one of the names on there and knew the history of this. He knew the story of this, and asked that we have this desk here this evening. And I thought it was just a fantastic idea. So I'll tell you the story. But first and foremost, thank you, Mr. Grubb. And what I'll tell you about this desk is that one of the very first people that I met in the school district was one of the retirees that we have here this evening, and that's Barbara Zagola from Hillcrest Elementary School. When I first came to the district a couple summers ago, and I had my first building tours, and I was touring through Hillcrest Elementary School, I came across Ms. Zagola's classroom. It was a hot summer day, hot summer day. And there she was inside that classroom, lacquering the wood from these desks. All of the desks that are inside this room. Came to learn that that's a ritual that she goes through, and she has gone through for the entirety of her career, the entirety of her career. These desks are circa 1947. From 1947, and if you can't get a good look at it, I encourage you to stick around and get a good look at it because thanks to Ms. Zagola, these desks are in phenomenal shape. So when you talk about tradition, when you talk about history, when you talk about taking care of your stuff, and you talk about people that just understand the essence of a place, it's just a desk, and yet it's not just a desk. It's someone that really gets it. And so, you know, to one of the very first people that I met, being here new in Council Rock at that time, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty special. It's pretty sweet. So congratulations to, uh, to Ms. Zagola. Congratulations to all of our retirees. I would like to ask our retirees, they weren't all able to stick around for the board meeting, but if you are one of our retirees this year, please stand up. And that's, that's all. Stand up and give them a round of applause.
If you come up to a microphone, which I'm sure I will regret, I will say. You have to come up to a microphone.
Come on up, Ms. Zagola.
I'm sure I'll really regret this.
When it comes to these desks, Mr. Creswell was the principal over in Holland, and he told me I was going to be teaching kindergarten in Hillcrest, and I was going to have tables. And I said, "Can I take the wooden desk from Holland?" He said, "But there's only 15." I said, "I'll start with 15." Then Ridgeboro closed down, and all of a sudden, there was the maintenance people, and they said, "There's some wooden desks at Holland." I said, "I'm going." So I found the rest of my wooden desk at Holland. Now, they were kind of a bluish color because they were so weathered. My son Christopher was 13 at the time, and I said, "You need a summer project. I'm going to teach you how to sand, and I'm going to teach you how to varnish these desks." So I will tell you, thank you, Christopher. You started it. So thank you very much.
Well, you're welcome. You're welcome, Ms. Zagola, and sorry, Christopher.
You know, Ms. Zagola's, Ms. Zagola's story hasn't, there's another aspect that I wanted to point out from tonight's retirees as well. One of our retirees tonight was Mr. Fash, who's retiring with 44 years of service to the school district, which is quite remarkable. The other thing I'll tell you, and I'll brag for him, is his son, whose name escapes me at this moment.
Matt.
Matt is the Bucks County.
Teacher of the Year.
Up in Central Bucks. And so what I, I point out to you that a lot of our staff, really, they, they come from teaching families. They generate teaching families of their own. So it's, we hear Dr. Fraser talk about these people are wired different, teachers are wired different. They really are. It's in their genes. And we see a lot of it, that we see people who've been families of teachers and become families of teachers. So I just, I'll brag to Mr. Fash. With 44 years of service, he is the longest-serving teacher we had retire this year. And I'm sure he and his family are very proud of this. I'm Matt.
Well said. Thank you, Mr. Grubb. And again, congratulations to all of this year's retirees. Job very well done. As I said, we have a number of presentations this evening as part of our superintendent's report. This past September, there was a Bucks County tour of honor. At this time, I would like to call up to the microphone, Mr. Zaffron, Recorder of Deeds. Is Mr. Zaffron here this evening? Not seeing a Mr. Zaffron at this time. We will keep our eyes open for Mr. Zaffron. Okay. So potentially coming back to that, to that topic. Tonight, we are very privileged to be able to honor some of our students. In particular, some of our student athletes who have reached the pinnacle of PIAA interscholastic athletics. And what that means is that these student athletes came home with gold. We had it happen both at North and at South. They won first place in the state. We had a fall team at North and a winter individual accomplishment at South. And we're going to start off by acknowledging our fall team at North. So at this time, and Mr. Tate, Board President, and I are going to go down to the floor, and I will conduct, following this presentation, the rest of the superintendent's report from the floor. But at this time, to announce this team, I would like to invite back to the podium the principal of CRL North, Ms. Susan McCarthy.
Good evening again.
I'm sorry.
I just said, hi there. It's been a long day. So again, I am so proud to be here this evening to congratulate nine superior athletes from Council Rock North. And just as Mr. Grubb said, that there is a teacher gene, I believe that there is also a long-distance running gene. And I would bet that we have families of, of long-distance runners here with us tonight as well. So I'd like to begin, and in alphabetical order, we will congratulate not only our 2016 SOL National Conference champions, our District One champions, but as Dr. Fraser said, and most notably, our PIAA state champions. Jay Boyd. Ryan Campbell. Sam Ory. Kevin Ogart. CJ Hawes. Tim Haas. Brian Keller. Ethan Cozak. And Matt Mullen. In addition to the tremendous accomplishments of our student athletes, I would also like to recognize Assistant Coach Rob Rogers and congratulate Head Coach Dave Mountain for being named the 2016 Pennsylvania Track and Field Coaches Association Mall Cross Country Coach of the Year.
Again, congratulations to our Council Rock North cross-country team. Job very well done. Exceptionally proud of you boys. Super. And next up, we, as I had already mentioned, have a winner champion from Council Rock High School South, and that's an individual champion. And to make that announcement, we have our athletic director from Council Rock High School South, Mr. Scott Lehrer. Mr. Lehrer.
Good evening, everyone. This is my first year at Council Rock South. It's been a great first year. I'm the ninth-grade principal and the athletic director, and I'm very honored to be here, and I'd like to thank you for this invitation. To introduce our head coach, Mr. Brad Silenperry, and our 2017 PIAA state wrestling champion, Zach Trampay. Guys, why don't you come on up? Before we give them their award, there's a couple things I'd like to say. Athletics have always played a major role in my life, and I wouldn't be standing where I am today if I did not take part in them. And 2016-17 was another great year for our Council Rock South wrestling program. We were the Super Bowl I National Conference champions. We were the District One champions. We were the District One team champion. We were sectional champions. We were regional champions. And we sent five wrestlers to the state championship this past March. However, that's not the only thing. Every day I walk into school, I see a big board right outside of our wrestling room. And from 2003 to 2017, and I apologize if you've heard these numbers before, but being my first year, I was astounded. 147 sectional place winners. 62 sectional champions. 115 district place winners. 48 district champions. 74 regional place winners. 28 regional champions. 60 state qualifiers. 39 state place winners. Nine state champions. Two NCA All-Americans. And the 2005 PIAA AAA state tournament champions. Those numbers are astounding. But as the athletic director, that's not what I'm most proud of. What I'm most proud of are all the other things that Brad and his staff bring to the table each day. When I first interviewed for this job, I said, "What..." They asked, I told them that the most important thing for our kids when they leave, their, their program, is that they have a meaningful, enriching life experience. And if I asked that question to Zach by being a part of our wrestling program for the past four years, I know the answer is yes, and everybody who came before them. So I just want to credit my head coach, who has basically given our kids a college experience every single day, 365 days a year. And that's why they have accomplished the things that they have. Zach is, follows in a long line of champions that we have. He's a remarkable, remarkable young man. I am proud of him. When I wore my Council Rock South around Giant Arena, Giant Arena in Hershey this past March, I was extremely proud. But like I said, these numbers are very important, but everything else that Brad and his staff bring to the program each day, that's what I'm most proud of. And I'd just like to congratulate and thank Brad for all of his hard work and his staff, and certainly congratulate Zach on this outstanding accomplishment. Thank you.
Okay, again, congratulations to, to Zach. Congratulations to our cross-country team from Council Rock North. Job very well done. The school district is exceptionally proud. We have some new guests in the boardroom with us. Nice to see all of you. Thanks so much for making it out. No, nothing is wrong. No worries. May 10th through 16th is Law Enforcement Week. I would like to thank our police departments, all of our police departments for being such phenomenal partners with us as a school district. They keep our students safe. They keep our schools safe. The lines of communications are always open. We always know that, even at 3:30 or 4 o'clock AM in January. Those lines of communication are open when I'm wondering what their input is on school delays or school closures, potentially. And it's really just a fantastic relationship that we have with all of our police departments. And for that, I say thank you. Obviously, we have a school resource officer program with both Northampton Township as well as Newtown Township, and that's terrific to have in both of our high schools. But the relationships go so much further than that, that we know that we can be very proactive in terms of our work with, with all four of our police departments. So we're here tonight to recognize them and also to thank them. So I believe we have a certificate for everyone who's able to be here this evening. At least, I hope that's the case. And Mr. Tate, I'm going to ask you to come up here once again, and we will do this department by department, starting with, with Newtown Borough. I don't believe that Chief Wojciechowski is able to be here this evening. Is that correct? Okay, so I'll give you a certificate to take back to Chief Wojciechowski, if that's okay. Corporal James Warnick, you can come on down, please, corporal. Officer George Rosenko. From Newtown Township, Chief Pasqualini. Okay, very good. Sergeant Steven Myers from Newtown Township. And Officer Renee Hurst, who is also our school resource officer. From Northampton Township, Chief Michael Clark. And also from Northampton Township, and also our skill, our school resource officer at Council Rock High School South, Officer James Caldwell. And from Upper Makefield Township. Some of those hardest phone calls, in fact. Some of those words up that way. Chief Mark Schmidt. Officer Lee Crawford. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much. Again, we are, we're so appreciative of everything that you do for the students, for our schools, the relationship that we have with you. It means a lot to us, and we certainly look forward to keeping it going. We know it's not easy for you to find time off to come here and be with us on an evening like this, but it means a lot to our community for you to come out, be visible, and to be seen together with us like this. So thank you. Very much appreciate it. Okay, as I said, it's a night of presentations with the superintendent's report. And next, we have some exciting ones. We still have a pretty full house here. I see a number of our teachers in attendance, which is outstanding. And this time of year, that can mean one thing, right, Mrs. Costa? That's right. It's CREF grant awards night. So Executive Director, Director of the Council Rock Education Foundation, Mrs. Costa, I turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Gail Acosta. I'm with the Council Rock Education Foundation, and we're honored tonight to bring to you our newest CREF innovative grant awardees. But before we get started, I realize it's a long night, but I do want to share some information with you. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge our CREF board members. Can you please stand? We worked so hard all year long for tonight, so I wanted to make sure that I acknowledge all of our board members who are committed to our mission. I do want to share a couple of highlights really quickly. As we know, tonight's an important night for our many recipients, but it also marks a milestone for the education foundation. This is our 10th year of awarding innovative grants throughout the district, and that's a huge accomplishment for the education foundation and for the students of Council Rock. In 2007, we began with our first grant. That was a $1,500 grant for a project called Camp Ophelia. Some of you may remember that. And since then, we've awarded over $200,000 for creative initiatives, of which 65% of that amount, $131,000, was funded in the last five years. But our impact does not stop there. Awarding grants is just one of the several things that we do in partnership with the school district. When the foundation hears or sees a support, a project that needs support throughout the district, that enriches our learning community, we lean in. For example, this past year, we saw an opportunity to enhance the fourth-grade STEM curriculum by funding a district-wide embryology project. And as a result, over 500 fourth-grade students learned about the stages of embryonic development as they incubated, observed, recorded data, and hatched avion eggs. We also host several alumni events throughout the year. We support the district science night, which is happening tonight. And we continue to bring STEAM ambassadors programs into our classrooms, in which we invite professionals and corporations to come in and to share real-life experiences with our students, so they can relate that to their academic track. We thank you for the opportunity to work in unison with the school district, and you have our commitment to develop opportunities that engage, educate, inspire our young people here in the Council Rock School District. So, now, onto tonight's awards. I will let you know, this year was an extremely competitive round, as we received over 29 grant applications totaling approximately $100,000. Our committee worked very hard reviewing each request, and after thoughtful consideration of all of our applications, the committee chose 12 grants totaling over $35,000 that we're going to award in a moment. So at this time, I'd like to invite Mary Ann Malicious. She will be presenting tonight's awards. And we have two helpers, our co-presidents, Kevin Bopar-Lont and Allison McGann, who will come and help with the checks. As we announce your name, please come forward and stand in the arc circle here, and we'll take a group photo at the very end.
Good evening. The first grant is from Council Rock South, and we're switching our order up a little bit because these guys need to get back to science night. So it's the STEAM Printing at 3D. It's Joe Warwick and Fred Bauer. Just going to read a little bit about it. 3D printers have become one of the greatest manufacturing tools recently. Students entering engineering and other STEAM fields require a strong understanding in product design, manufacturing, and material science. A 3D printer will allow students in both physics and industrial technology to collaborate, to produce necessary hardware to perform experiments. Our next grant is our first Dr. Beth Dupree Honorary Grant, and we have Carrie Grundman here, who is on the board of the Healing Consciousness Foundation, who is going to help present. This award is the STEM Expansion, It's Time to Expand, from Wrightstown Elementary School. And we have Paula Etchen and Jennifer French here, and this grant was also written by Charlene Boran, who could not be here. If I didn't say this grant is Wrightstown Elementary School, and while keeping STEM a focus for the older grades, a new focus will be directed to the primary grades by introducing coding and programming through the use of robotics. The next grant is the Skype is the Limit for Wrightstown and Newtown, and we have, once again, Paula Etchen and Jennifer French with Susan Keen from Newtown and Wrightstown Elementary. This project involves the use of wide-angle webcams to enable our students to interact and collaborate with people around the world in different areas of expertise, such as authors, scientists, and archaeologists, as well as students in other classrooms, both in and outside of Council Rock. The webcams will also allow us to travel on virtual field trips. Our next grant is STEM Research Resources, written by Teresa Grateful, who is not here. Teresa Grateful, correct? Is Jason? Can you track, track? I know. Why does it have to be him? Got it, thank you. Is here to accept from Council Rock North. And this project is, the equipment being requested will serve to expand the range of STEM research options available to the students in CR in grade seven through 12, both through the use in the Science Fair program and the use in the Honors Experimental Research in STEM course, which is available in both high schools. Our next grant is Steaming Towards Arts, Education, and Community. This is Tyler Hohn from the Village Library of Wrightstown. Village Library of Wrightstown will offer STEM and STEAM programming for third and fourth graders during summer and winter breaks, that will be designed to offer diverse concepts to ensure broad appeal and interest, create connections across disciplines and between learners of diverse backgrounds, and stimulate self-exploration and the use of community resources for future growth. Next, we have Tinker Tuesday, and with Christina Lazarino from the Free Library of Northampton Township. Tinker Tuesday is a monthly after-school program held at the Free Library of Northampton Township. It provides students the opportunity to experiment with a variety of technologies they may not normally have access to outside a traditional classroom. The program includes experiences with robotics, circuits, and engineering tools. Next is Accepting Me/Accepting You Initiative. Jean Lindros and Kathy Hornberger from Rowling Hills Elementary School. The Accepting Me/Accepting You Initiative is a wraparound multifaceted initiative to incorporate diversity, inclusion, and equity curriculum and activities across all grades. The goal of the initiative is to empower our students with the knowledge, skills, and confidence to interrupt bias, prejudice, and bullying when faced with it. Our next project is funded by the Rick Moore Memorial Fund, and it's the UNLESS Project at the Philadelphia Zoo, written by Melissa Metzler and Lisa Bonaro from Newtown Middle School. Lisa, who is a speech and language pathologist, and Melissa, autistic support teacher, work together to support eighth-grade itinerant students that are on the autistic spectrum. They use project-based learning to generalize some of the social skills that are a part of the students' IEPs. They will conduct the project through the Philadelphia Zoo's UNLESS Project that encourages students to promote energy efficiency and to get the community involved. Next, we have Check Out STEM at Your Library. Kathy Pagano from Council Rock North. This project will allow the library to build a basic book collection to support STEM development at CR North. It will also provide for the purchase of materials to be used for a library makerspace event between North students and elementary school students. These materials will be catalogued in the library management system and shared with staff for future classroom activities and STEM-related programs. Okay, our next one is the Richborough Elementary School Library Mural, and this is in memory of Robert H. Winters, written by Christina Veal and Hillary Adams, Richborough Elementary School. To install a painted mural in the Richborough Elementary School Library, that students, faculty, staff, and PTO develop in collaboration with the Bucs Artist in Residence Program. In consideration of the space and how it's used, the subject matter will focus on the history of communication technologies. Next is One School, One Book, Lisa Wise from Churchville Elementary School. One School, One Book is a program designed to enrich our large school community through shared reading experiences. It builds literacy skills at home and at school. Students, family members, and all staff will participate in reading a provided book. Activities are developed for school and community to promote and enrich the reading/learning experience. And our last one is STEM Implementing Technology Into First Grade Math Learning Centers, with Mary Whittle, Pam Longstreet, and Amy Moore from Hillcrest Elementary School. Teaching 21st-century learners demands the use of innovative instructional practices. Implementing technology into math centers through the use of iPads aids teachers in using multisensory approaches to learning for students at their individual readiness. With STEM programs, teachers will be more deeply engaging tomorrow's leaders utilizing technology on the iPads today. Congratulations to all our grant recipients.
Okay, thank you, Mary Ann. And our long list of presentations is almost over, because now that CREF has just given away a lot of money, they now, they need to replenish some money. So finally this evening, Mr. Kevin Bopar-Lont, Vice President of Customers Bank, has a big check. $12,000. A $12,000 donation in support of the innovative programs to benefit CR students through the Council Rock Education Foundation. We are certainly honored to have Kevin's leadership and service as co-president of the Council Rock Education Foundation. In accepting tonight's check on behalf of CREF will be Gail Acosta, Mr. Mark Ballick, who is one of our CREF board members, Ms. Denise Brooks, one of our CREF board members, Mr. Ed Tate, our school board president, and myself. Kevin, thank you so very much for your generosity and continued support on behalf of our students, and specifically through the Council Rock Education Foundation. And that ends the superintendent's report, finally.
On behalf of the board, I'd like to say thank you very much to Customers Bank. Thank you very much, Gail, for your efforts, and to the members of the CREF board. Mr. Ballick, Ms. Brooks, thank you very much. And, you know, CREF does wonderful work that has a direct impact on the classroom, and you're invaluable. We appreciate your efforts, and we thank you very much for a very successful year, and 10 years of success, correct? Yeah, let's shoot for 10 more. Thank you very much. We now move on to public comment. It is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. We would ask that you limit your comments to no longer than three minutes. Please consider the fact that there may be young children in the audience or watching this broadcast live on CRTV when you're speaking. It is our goal to maintain a respectful environment, so that members of our community have an equal opportunity to address the board without interruption, while the board welcomes your ideas and will consider them in deliberating an issue. We may not respond to your comments or questions. We have one person sign up for public comment, and then the floor is open. Mr. Gold, when you take the podium, please give us your name and your town of residence. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jeff Gold from Northampton Township. I wouldn't say I just happened to choose this meeting to come to, but it was wonderful to see. to see some of our children's teachers. Our children are, I used to say that they're Council Rock students, then they became Council Rock graduates, now they all became college graduates, and they got a wonderful foundation here today. And I'm very happy to report that two of my three had Mrs. Segola, whose desk is there, and I do not see their initials carved into the room. I was very pleased to see that or to not see that. I really just have one quick question that maybe I can get an answer to. I looked all over the Council Rock website and some other procedures and policies of the board. My question is that schools are closed for students on voting days and election days. I'm just wondering why we close schools for students on Election Day.
We did not use to close it on primary election day. We always have on general election day, but especially with construction going on currently, it's become a bit of a safety concern. But even without the construction projects, we've run into issues occasionally at some of our schools. They're public polling places, so as you have the general public coming into those buildings and we have students who are obviously inside those buildings, the potential is there for something negative to happen. And so to mitigate against that, we made the decision this year for the first time, next year will be the second time, to close the buildings. And having lived it this year for the first time, it's a decision that personally I'm happy that we made.
All right, so the flow of adults from the outside community close to students is just uncomfortable?
Yeah, with safety as the predominant factor.
Risk factors.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Robin Schwartz. I live in Holland. I currently have two students in the district and I've been very pleased with the education they've gotten to date. I do have, I do believe there is one thing lagging behind in our district and that is in our world language program. Currently, our language offerings, I feel, are lagging behind the offerings of neighboring districts. For the majority of students who start a foreign language in eighth grade and want to continue with their studies, they have no options beyond Level Four, which they reach in 11th grade. For those students in Honors Four, they have the option of taking an AP course. For those in Academic or those Honors students who don't wish to pursue the AP course, there is no offering for them. Districts that rank higher in various polls for top schools offer world languages through Level Five. These districts include New Hope, Salisbury, Central Bucks, and Lower Marion. This year, at Council Rock South, there are currently seven sections of Spanish Four. Three of those classes are Academic, four are Honors. This year at South, there were only two AP Spanish classes. There are, that means if there were four Honors classes last year, half those students chose not to take an AP course. Those kids who would like to continue but aren't in Honors have no option again. Those who would like to continue but do not want to take another AP course, again, have no option. Our students are competing for the same college spots as students in other districts, and when it comes to languages, these other districts have more offerings. We live in a global society and the vast majority of Council Rock grads will be working in metropolitan areas upon graduation from college. If a student wants to become proficient in a language, a year away from that language is detrimental. It's the goal of the district to actually teach the language or just to check a box, including the number of options offered. Many colleges, including Penn State's Smell College of Business, require students to take 12 credits at Penn State. Students who have taken years of high school can take a placement test. Those students who have taken four or more years of high school can be eligible to place into Level Three. Those students at South who have taken Level Four years of Spanish or for any foreign language are at a disadvantage because they now have a year break in foreign language. Thus, they may not place into the Level Three class at Penn State, but rather down to the Level Two. Additionally, world languages are viewed as electives in Council Rock and are not given the same weight as other electives. All world language courses after Level Two should be considered accelerated or Honors. A world language requires a significant investment of time to be successful, and there is a significant amount of homework and studying required outside the classroom. The district offers many electives that are weighted as accelerated, such as Accelerated Exercise Physiology and Sports Science, better known to the kids as Super Gym, Accelerated Computer Science, Accelerated Business Law, Honors Business Management, among others. The students know college is a numbers game and every decimal point counts in their GPA. The language classes should be weighted similarly. Finally, in the current cost-conscious environment, the district needs to allocate its limited resources in an efficient manner. While I understand the district tries to have parity in languages, the demand for certain languages far exceed the demand of other languages. Supply and demand should be driving the course offerings. Just because the numbers aren't there, for example, to offer a French five doesn't mean that's a reason not to offer a Spanish five. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schwartz. Thank you for coming. Are there any other public comments?
Nancy Cowan, Newtown Bar. I recently have been thinking very much about the history of Council Rock as we're going to close two schools next year, Newtown Middle, which was its first high school that it built in 1954, and Holland Middle. There'll still be a Holland Middle and there'll still be a Newtown Middle, but we are going to close those buildings and I hope that, as I've said before, that will honor the history of those buildings to Council Rock. And I found out on Tuesday that before Richborough Elementary was built, there was an old Richborough School, where the building is still standing in Richborough. And when it got too crowded, many students who lived closer to that building than they do to Wrightstown will transfer up to Wrightstown. I actually met on Tuesday two women in their 30s who went to Wrightstown who lived in Richborough, which now were considering maybe going the other way, taking people from Wrightstown to Richborough, and I just thought that it was incredible. And the other thing is when Richborough, it was called Richborough Intermediate when it was built in the 60s, and it was the first middle school of Council Rock. I think there's still Richborough Intermediate on the outside of the building, and everybody from Council Rock went to that school because it was the only middle school we had. So if you lived at the farthest point of Soul Feinstone or the farthest house south or wherever you lived, everybody in the district went to Richborough Intermediate School. So it played a big role in our history. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carroll.
Hello, I'm Chance Kavars from Washington Crossing. I'm an Eagle Scout from Troop 99 here in Newtown, Naval Academy candidate and a junior at North. I'd like to take this opportunity to speak about an issue that I find to be pertinent to me and the community. Following this most recent election, a wave of hate spread across this nation. I'm not referring to the supposed incidences of hate crimes, some of which were found to be falsified or exaggerated. What I'm referring to is the rise of radically liberal protests, riots, and attacks following November 8th. A simple Google search turns up videos of protesters clad in black and hiding their faces, burning and looting and beating people who don't agree with certain political ideologies. While I in no way seek to compare this to my experiences at North, I do find what has happened to me is part of a larger shift towards intolerance of conservative ideas. The other day, while discussing some time I'd spent at a gun range with a fellow North student, I was told by a liberal student to shut up, that it isn't cool to be Republican, and that I was threatening. I believe these comments help to illustrate the shift I'm attempting to discuss. On another occasion, while attempting to explain my views to a liberal classmate, I was told in rather colorful language that my views were disturbing to him. Obviously, I'm all for freedom of opinion. In fact, it's what allows me to come before all of you today and express my views and opinions. However, when your opinion holds that those who disagree with you are unenlightened or just stupid, and some views become more accepted than others, I find these actions to be particularly unnerving and hypocritical. I know not how to address this problem and I'm not even sure it can be solved. However, I feel obligated to ensure that it is known. A community which stands against hate and romance tolerance should make an effort to not just promote diversity of race or lifestyle, but that of thought as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chance. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Jessica and I'm from Richborough. I actually have something that I'd like to say regarding the redistricting scenarios. So I'd like to find out first if there's going to be a forum where we can speak on Monday prior to there being a formal discussion about the redistricting. I don't know how Monday's meeting is going to work.
The meeting on Monday will follow a similar script as the previous four Master Capital Planning meetings, which is there are a series of presentations made and then public comment is reserved for the end of the meeting. So there's a substantial portion of time for public comment, but it's at the end of the meeting. So unlike these board meetings where there's public comment at both the beginning and the end of the meeting, at the Master Capital Planning meetings, the public comment is reserved for the end so that that comment can be informed, if you will.
Will that be the end of the meeting and yet prior to when a final decision is going to be made? Or will that be?
Oh, yes. It'll absolutely be prior to any formal board discussion.
Okay, in that case, I'll reserve this for Monday. Thank you.
And it's up to you. If you want to make comments now and then, that's certainly fine as well.
I can wait until Monday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any further public comment? Thank you for coming. We'll move ahead on the agenda. Two discussion items there is one, the 2017-2018 Board of Directors Meeting Calendar. Dr. Fraser, would you give us some highlights, please?
Sure thing, Mr. Tate. The meeting calendar that is linked on the agenda looks very similar to how we are operating currently with us meeting certainly every Thursday of the month, unless there are five Thursdays in a month. There is one Board Business Meeting a month, just like we are currently functioning. Facilities and Finance Committee Meetings are still operating on the same Thursday, which I know there was some level of concern when we first started that, but in my opinion, that is working well, so well, in fact, that we're currently advertising Finance as immediately following Facilities Committee because Facilities Committee is not taking the full hour on every occasion. So I believe that that piece is working well and this schedule is also allowing us, which the previous schedule did not, to designate one of the four Thursdays a month for Policy Committee. So given the substantial Policy Committee work that we have in front of us, that we have had and continue to have, this schedule allows us to devote the fourth Thursday each month for Policy Committee work. So it's the administration's recommendation that we continue with this schedule with Facilities and Finance, the first Thursday, that double meeting, Academic Standards, the second Thursday of each month, the Board Business Meeting, the third Thursday of each month, and Policy Committee, the fourth Thursday, all meetings starting at 7:00 with the exception of Facilities Committee and Finance, which the first meeting there starts at 6:30 PM, which again is exactly how we're functioning at this time. That continues to be the administration's recommendation.
I very much appreciate it. It is unusual for us on September 19th to have a School Board Directors Meeting on a Tuesday, but I appreciate your having done that around Rosh Hashanah, which starts the next night, so that's very much appreciated.
Great, thanks for pointing that out.
Is there other comment? Questions? I think the schedule that we adopted going into this current year has proven to be effective and efficient, and I would only point out to the public that a great deal of the work of the board is being done at the committee level. So committee meetings are important and they are open to the public, and we do welcome residents to attend committee meetings. Moving forward to the Consent Agenda, Dr. Thorwood, would you read the motion, please?
Sure. I move to approve the Consent Agenda, Items A through H as contained in the attachments to the agenda, subject to audit.
Comments? Questions? Dr. Foster?
Thank you. So I missed the Facilities Meeting where this may have been discussed, the trash, the waste removal and recycling. So which farm provides the recycling? There's advanced disposal services and waste management in Pennsylvania. I just wasn't sure who's doing what.
They each provide recycling for those respective buildings that they're being contracted for. They provide trash and recycling.
So the bid is being split among the buildings, and in this summary, it doesn't say who gets what building, but somewhere else it probably does.
It does on the attachment. In short, Waste Management is getting the two high schools and Newtown Middle School.
Okay. But they bid on all of them?
They bid on all of them, but there were, I believe, five bidders, and amongst the five, those were the two low responsible bids and split amongst those buildings and discussed with them. They're both okay with the split bid.
Great. And then on the propane, I know it's something we've been working on and we had some hiccups with respect to the technology that was available on the new buses, but did we ever get any sense of what our fuel, our miles per gallon of propane is trending towards? Are we still kind of investigating that?
Actually, we are, and we have some estimates, but they're not very good estimates. First Student is supposed to be putting a report card together for us, and they have been struggling to be able to use the technology on the buses. It's a GPS-issue type thing in the way the information's coming out. First Student and Andy and myself have been involved in trying to get the better data. But if you would give me some time, I could give you numbers. I don't have them tonight, but I could give you numbers that are round numbers, that they're not as good numbers as we'd like them to be. We'd like individual buses to be able to evaluate, you know, the highs and the lows in the buses and try to determine what type of activity causes one bus to be higher rated than others because propane is very different in the way it burns than gasoline. It isn't the same type of things, but we cannot get individual mileage right now.
Do we have a sense for the whole fleet? Because, you know, we went into this with the thought that propane would all in all end up being significantly cheaper, and I just don't know, having run it for a full year, whether we have a sense of how it's working out.
I will tell you that I believe all in all, we are doing better than it would be with diesel, but I'd have to get you better numbers. There's one thing that we are receiving that we did not anticipate, and that is the excise tax refund that we get, 50 cents per gallon on any diesel, I mean, any propane. That's about $210,000 a year that we did not anticipate previously, so that is saving us money for sure. Our miles per gallon are not as great as what we wanted it to be or we expected it to be, but we don't have enough data to really be able to determine why. Giving you a long answer, it may be, but I just don't have real good data.
I'm glad that you're still working on it.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. Any other comments or questions?
You take your first, then I have a question. Okay, so I just, Bob, it's frustrating how government works so ineptly sometimes, right? Because, and I'm not saying you are inept, I'm just saying that we can't get miles per gallon from buses today, and we have problems with GPS. So we had a problem with the GPS, I talked to you about it, I was almost run off a road by a bus, what, nine months ago? I called you, gave you the number when I saw, and the GPS wasn't working. But everybody has a GPS in their pocket. I don't know why we, this is what confounds me about government. We can't get a mile per gallon reading on the buses that we paid how many millions of dollars for, we contract every year. Makes no sense. Every car out there, you push a button, you get miles per gallon. Every car that's newer than 10 years, and these buses are brand new. So I'm not being critical of you, Bob, but this is part of government that just frustrates me that we accept these standards of, well, it's just not working well, when the technology is clearly out there to allow for that. So I want to challenge First Student, remind them that it is 2017, remind them that we spent millions of dollars on this contract that was, what, a 50% increase over the other? And... And let's get some answers on how efficient we're being. We don't know how efficient we're being if we don't have the data.
I got this, just so you know how often we're involved in this, this email was from Tuesday at 8:40 PM, from Dave Armit, who is the Vice President. Andy, Bob, obviously our IT platform is not as robust as what Andy has experienced in his past life in logistics. While we are further along than any of our competitors, the industry has not kept pace with the trucking and logistics space. That said, we are committed to continue to push for actionable data and reporting as a company. To that end, many of the things Andy has asked for has had an influence on our direction and development. So I will tell you that we are on them considerably about this. We have a meeting, I think, next week is our quarterly business meeting, and we discuss this every time we have it, and Andy is pushing them. So I am as frustrated as you are with this, and I think we're going to get it, and it isn't by a lack of try. Thank you.
Other, Mr. Grab.
Just want to make sure people who may be listening, when, and it's an important distinction, and I think that some of Mr. Byler's comments and some of the comments from Mr. Reinhardt, a little bit of background there. When he speaks of Andy, or of Mr. Rowe, Andy Rowe is our Transportation Director. He's the guy who oversees, manager, he's the guy who oversees our transportation. He comes from a corporate mainstream trucking logistics firm, and so this is a new push. You're hearing this as Mr. Reinhardt reads the letter from a transportation company, that Andy's pushing for a standard there that the bus company was just not used to. Not Andy's fault, Andy's doing the right thing. That's why we hired Andy, because he's going to bring a different level of service, a corporate expectation to do it. So when you hear Mr. BioGas, his orientation there comes from, a corporate standard would ask you for these things, wouldn't be a government standard. So I just want to share with you, you know, we talk about small decisions we make in the background that then have implications up front. That's one. We chose a man who is an expert, candidly, in transportation logistics, and he's pushing our vendors to be to a corporate standard. I think that's wise and appropriate, so I wanted to give a little framework for that. Out of curiosity, comparing the two conversations about propane and disposal, do we pay the heat, who pays for the heat at the garages? Do we pay for the heat at the bus garage? Or does the vendor?
I believe the vendor does.
Why do we pay for garbage at the bus garage? It's $2,500 a year. Why does he, I paid the vendor way too much. They were not agreeable and much when we came to them for First Student. I think the obligation should be for them to pick up the $2,500 for their operations at that garage. We're the leasing, we're the owner. So why do I pay garbage to pick up?
I would have to look at the contract.
So towards that end, I'm either, I'm not going to prove the aspect of it granting the garbage collection at the garage, I would agree to everything else therein, because I want them to pay for that garage. I'm paying them way too much already, because they were disagreeable and wouldn't come to us and cooperate with us, and I think they gouged us. That's my feeling on it. So I, you know, where I can, they can pay for the garbage pickup at their building, from my perspective. So I'm not going to pay for the $2,500 bucks a year. So if we want to take that out of the motion, I'm glad for it. If not, I'll just vote no on it. And the second thing, I want to be very clear, and Matt, I look to you just for a nod, yes or no, this garbage collection and recycling is not inclusive of our electronics recycling. Is that true, that the recycling we're granting here is not inclusive?
That is correct.
Of our recycling? And that recycling program has been a great savings to the community in cooperation, because they do, and we've had it recently as well, a community pickup, not pickup, the drop-off for recycling at no cost to the community, and it saved recycling fees and the community a great deal of effort. So is there, if there is another board member or banker of the motion would be interested, if we were to remove this from the bid list, I am sure the bid for that aspect of it would be valid for the 30 days it will take for us to find the answer. But for right now, I am going to vote no on the transportation, on the garbage pickup if the, for the aspect of including the pickup at the bus garages.
I need to make a clarifying statement, so everyone takes this and understands the issue here. The issues are the way the GPS information is retained within the Bluebird bus and how it is used by First Student. This is not just a First Student issue, it is more on levels of corporations and the way information is being provided. First Student is doing their best to try to work with, and there's two different systems that are in place, so we are frustrated, we wish First Student would have more impact and get it done, but this is not a sole First Student issue, and it's an issue specifically to propane buses.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. Any further?
I've got one.
Yes?
Mr. Reinhardt, when you look through that contract, I'd like to know if it spells out in there, we're owed miles per gallon, in which case, is there a contractual obligation to provide that to us?
I will guarantee you it is not, we're not responsible for it. I will tell you, I mean, they're not responsible for it, but if you had talked to Andy, it's almost like thinking that you're going to get a speedometer in your car. It should be without saying that you have that, and that's what Andy's point is.
And finally, I'm amenable, if I made the motion, if you want to take that out, I'll leave that to.
Okay, you want to take that? Who you made?
I'm okay. We're moving on.
Doug, the bid will last for garbage pickup for the 30 days to come back on picking up at the?
Yeah, I mean, we're good through June 30th with the current vendor, so.
So you'll amend your motion and remove the granting for the garage?
I don't know if Rob has any.
I don't know what the, I don't know what the bid, the bids from these vendors say with respect to how long their, how long their bid remains open, so I, you know, I can't comment on that.
I will, I believe it's at least 60 days, but I will follow up, and I'm certain the vendor will work with us if I give them a call.
I mean, Mr. Grab, your issue is just the, I mean, your issue isn't really with the bid, it's with the, it's with the lessee's obligation to, so the waste.
I don't want to enter into a contract to pay $2,500, $200 bucks a month to take out somebody else's trash.
But Jerry, we pay, we pay for the actual unit price for pickup, so we could just direct them not to pick trash up at that facility until that issue is resolved and awarded as, as it's presented.
And either way, the contract will speak to it. So the contract with First Student either says that their, that Council Rock is obligated to do waste removal, or the, or the lessee is, and if it says the lessee is, then I think that the lessee owes reimbursement to the district for that cost, or it can pay it directly.
Fine. Doug, I, I'll take your approach to it, which is you'll simply direct them not to pick up until we get clarifying, and if we do find that they should have been picking up in arrears, we'll ask for them for reimbursement of the money. So, okay.
So now you're okay with, all right. It'll go forward as the motion is written. Are there any objections to the motion? Hearing none, we'll record, this motion is passing unanimously and move to number two. Ms. McKessy, would you read the motion, please?
I move to approve the graduate listings as contained in the attachments to this agenda, pending completion of all graduation requirements.
Questions, comments? Objections? Hearing none, we'll record this as unanimously approved. Moving on to number two. Mrs. Thomas, would you read the motion, please?
Sure. I move to approve the personnel actions and EDRPP as contained in the attachments to this agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Questions? Comments?
I'm in no.
Then we'll have a roll call vote. Mrs. Rice, please.
Mr. Bla, uh, Mr. Byler?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
No.
Yes.
Mr. Grab, yes, okay. Ms. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thorwart?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion pass. Number three. Mr. Byler, would you read the motion, please?
I move to approve the Insight Workforce Solutions LLC agreement as contained in the attachment to this agenda.
Second.
Who's that, Thor?
Ms. Taylor, would you enlighten us, please?
Here's a very brief presentation, I think, under 10 minutes.
Good. Thank you very much.
I actually will go ahead and get started, because most of this is a reiteration. We are here tonight to formally request your approval of our partnership with the Insight Group for our professional substitute placements. As you recall, we've had some discussion about this in the past. In December, at our Finance Committee meeting, we began exploring the possibility of Council Rock, working with a third-party vendor for professional substitutes. In April, we had an in-depth presentation at Finance about this topic and had our partners from Insight come out and join us. Very briefly, because it's been discussed at length in the past, I'll reiterate some of the reasons why we're seeking approval tonight for this service. In education nationwide and here in Pennsylvania, we're seeing a steep decline in the number of teachers entering the field. We're also seeing a decline in the number of issuances of certifications. When there's a shortage of teachers, it affects not only permanent placements, but substitute placements as well. Our fill rates have been declining. We, for many years, enjoyed fill rates in the high 90s, and for the last two years, we've been struggling to reach the 70%. In addition to shortages and fill rates that are less than desirable, there are other challenges that we face being a direct employer of substitutes. As a direct employer, work hurtailed by the retirement code. We can't employ any retirees, we're not permitted under code, to have peacers, annuities, work as substitutes. Additionally, we cannot allow our subs to work more than four hours, four days, rather, a week consistently, because if we do so, it pushes them into the benefit-eligible category under the Affordable Health Care Act. And unfortunately, we can't financially sustain health care for our substitutes. Additionally, prior to your approval of increases in our pay rate in December, our pay rate was less than competitive, putting us at a disadvantage in the county. Over the past two years, where we've been suffering from this shortage, we have worked in partnership with our association and the members of our professional staff, primarily through our Substitute Shortage Committee. That committee has met religiously and identified problems, brainstormed for solutions, and has done some good work together, and I thank everyone on that committee for all of their effort and time. Despite all of our efforts, though, we recognize that we need help, and we have, in our search for help, found a partner that we think will bring an excellent substitute program here to Council Rock. So I'm going to introduce you to Mr. Joe Kelly, who's the president of the Insight Company, and Mr. Andy Walter, who is the CEO.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to thank the board, Dr. Fraser, Mr. Reinhardt, Ms. Taylor, for allowing us to present tonight. Insight was founded in 2013. We have over 3,500 employees and 25 corporate employees. We work with actually over 35 school districts, and we have a common goal with your school district, is that to promote academic achievement. With our partnership, we focus on four things. One is strategy. We have a data-driven staffing strategy. We look at analytics, absence trends, volatility. That information gives us the information to move forward with the correct strategy and staffing plan for our school district. We look at recruitment and retention efforts. We recruit both through social media, online, colleges and universities, job fairs, as well as we'll be on-site and present in district. We'll come to football games, we'll come to civic events, we'll be at back-to-school night, and one of the things we also focus on is retention. With many school districts, if, when you're working with a vendor, they tell you all the recruiting efforts that they have and new individuals they brought into the program. We will also measure that against retention, making sure that we retain the key individuals to the substitute program. Another piece to our program is the account managers and support that we provide. Our account managers are either former educators, former teachers, former directors, and their goal is to be on-site, provide direction, provide oversight to the program, and really be a coach or a mentor to the substitutes that we're providing. Our customer service team is there from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. We're there to backfill any late call-ins or call-outs. We're there to work with the principals and secretaries and any administration issues. And the last thing would be, you have a direct partnership with Frontline Technologies currently, and that will remain, so logins, passwords, things like that will not change. A little, some notes about Insight. With our current clients, they've experienced an average fill rate increase of 10%. When we look at recruiting, and I talked about this briefly, we have a recruiting strategy that's customized to your school district. So we'll come to, we'll come to back-to-school events, we'll come to football games, we're going to ask the board and the administration if there's any civic events or community events in the towns that the students and staff reside in that we can come to that are not district affiliated. An example of that would be the Westchester Chili Cook-Off that we go to for the Westchester Area School District. There are many examples, and being present in the community can help our program and make sure that we're hiring from the community as well. We will have a guest teacher, we'll build on your current guest teacher program and pool. We have college universities and college and university relationships and partnerships. We'll make sure that we bring those students with, that are juniors and seniors, back into this program. And we also use Google, Facebook, social media, and remarketing. One of the things that we focus on with our efforts in recruiting is our online presence. It's recruiting to individuals that aren't necessarily looking to work with Insight. We're able to go out through the Google Analytics, through Facebook information, and target our audience to those individuals that meet a criteria that we're looking for as a substitute in district. The substitutes that are working with our program have zero restrictions. They can work five days a week, 184 days, or 185 days a year. Many instances, we'll try to get those individuals that want to work, working as often as possible. And they're no longer part of the public sector. As a private employer, we can hire former teachers or retired teachers. We've already talked with the administration about rolling out a message and note to those individuals and a letter from the district to inform them that they can come onboard with Insight. So here's our recruiting, hiring, and strategy to staff your schools. One is we'll be recruiting on-site. We'll have district open houses twice per month. We'll have the social media and website and Google, Facebook marketing campaigns. We'll also do some local advertising. Obviously, we'll be working with the colleges and universities. We'll be doing all the necessary career fairs and college education expos, as well as some local and civic events. We will be managing the onboarding process, the credentialing process, the background check process for the school district and for the substitutes that are entering into your workforce. We will grandfather, most importantly, we'll grandfather all existing substitutes into our program. And then for those that are new, we'll provide training and orientation. A piece with our account managers, being former educators, we have a professional growth model with our training component. We'll make sure that the substitutes that are new to the program will be trained before they enter the classrooms, and our account managers will be providing mentoring and coaching to those individuals during the school year. And the last piece is strategy. We look at the analytics, we look at the data, we look at past trends, we look at historical information, and together with the school district and collaboration, we'll design and customize a staffing plan to meet your needs.
And I'm going to take this part over, and this is just an analysis of the cost of this program. As I've said in the past, that I'm using an estimate of 10,000 days, basically, or 10,000 sub-days. That is a estimate that is on the high side. That would definitely be very close to 100% fill rate, which I'm not sure we're going to get there, but that is probably the highest it will be. These are different These are different daily rates, and as you can see, I just estimated the quantities by the daily rates based on the specific teacher. And all I did was calculate the pay the teacher would receive. That number would be the same if we were paying them, or if Insight would also pay them. Also, Insight then gets a thirty percent markup. That is the total cost of the markup, as I show here, and that would be the total payment that we would pay to Insight. So it would be one million sixty-four thousand dollars wages paid. It would be a markup of thirty percent, and that would be another three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, and that would equate to one million three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Last time, I talked about it based on budget terms, but then we got into a discussion, if you remember, at Finance Committee about how much more we would pay should we go contracted. So that's this calculation. The wages are the same amount. We pay the employer share of FICA. This next year's retirement is thirty-two point five seven percent, workers' compensation and unemployment compensation. So in total, we would pay one million five hundred thousand dollars. But because we are not paying Social Security or retirement anymore, we would lose the state reimbursement that we would get back from that. So I need to decrease the total contribution by two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So the net amount that we would pay is one million two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, or ninety-seven thousand dollars more. Again, I want to make sure you understand that that is if, if we are at ten thousand subs, and that would be very, very close to full, the fill rate being a hundred percent. So I'm not sure we'd get there. And if it would be only eight thousand or something, the ninety-seven thousand would be proportionately lower. So that is probably the top range that we would be paying them in excess of the amount we would pay should we have the subs ourselves. But we know that that would not create the environment to increase our fill rate the way it will if we have a contractor involved in Insight. Did I explain that okay? Any questions?
So just so I understand, if we do it ourselves, it's ninety-seven thousand approximately. If we hire it out, it's three hundred and thirteen thousand. Is that what you're saying?
If we do it ourselves, we would pay ninety-seven thousand dollars.
Additional.
Yes.
Additional over what we're, over the base, right? No?
The amount we pay them would be one million three hundred and eighty-three thousand. If we did it ourselves and we got the fill rate up, we'd only pay one million two hundred and eighty-six thousand.
It's going to cost us ninety-seven thousand dollars.
Which is what I think I just said.
Okay.
So if it, if it costs us ninety-seven thousand dollars more, right, over the wages and whatnot, if we did it ourselves, if we hire an outside firm, it's going to cost us three hundred and thirteen thousand over the wages, because there's a thirty percent markup. Yes? Am I not understanding that?
If we would do it ourselves, it would be four hundred and forty thousand dollars minus the two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So that would be two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars markup. With them, it's three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars not markup, so it's ninety-seven thousand dollars different, the markup.
Which is, again, what I think I just said.
Okay. So just so I'm clear, you're running at about ten thousand substitutes a year. The increment between doing it ourselves and having this outside firm do it is a hundred thousand dollars. So in essence, we're paying a premium of ten dollars a day per substitute. Well, it really works out, too. It's a hundred thousand bucks, it's ten thousand. I've lost Christine somewhere in the midst. But the effort for us will be somewhat, I'm like, the effort for us is expected to be somewhat less from a labor perspective in terms of, we'll have less, our paperwork will be simpler because we won't have to do the filing and everything else around FICA and all the benefits and everything.
I think the key piece to remember is that we want to get our classes covered. So that's the key piece.
I'm talking back to that.
But you will have the alleviation of workload in many departments. So pay well, the Information Systems Department that handles all of the ACA reporting and the ten ninety-fives, you'll have the alleviation of work in the HR department, you'll have the alleviation of work at the school setting where you have principals and assistant principals spending the better part of the morning trying to find coverage, school secretaries. There's alleviation of work across many departments.
So that's what I'm coming to, which is the ninety-seven thousand dollars is a hard cost differentiation we can see. We have soft cost avoidance here as well, which is, if we said it was thirty thousand dollars, I'm making up a number, it might well be thirty thousand dollars. It closes the gap to sixty thousand dollars. And the other thing, which I want to tie the conversation we've had this evening together for a second, which is, what was the retiring professional staff, teacher, number of teachers who just retired tonight? Someone call up.
Teachers.
Teachers. Seventeen?
Yeah, it's more than that. It's probably about, high twenties.
Let's say high twenties. Let's say it was twenty people. Those twenty people who we know and are experienced are going, are going to be retired. Let's say it's twenty for the conversation. If we don't do this, we can't hire them at all to come attend to our classrooms, even though they're familiar with our facilities, our people, our processes. They're going to be retired, they can still work. They can't work under state law for us directly because of the pension plan and the way it works. Under this, they could come back, which is an immediate resource of qualified, what did we get, about nine hundred and fifty-four years this, tonight? So it doesn't go as far away. For me, looking at this, and kudos to, not kudos, but traditional appreciation of what Rob Cox does, we have a get-out-of-jail thing on this. The only question I have, Christine, which I don't have a clear definition on, is, if we go for a long-term substitute, this past year, we had, we had many people, we are blessed to have many people who are able to take maternity leave and be out for a number of months. Do we fill using your resources in this school district, those long-term, or is that something that we look to Insight to fill?
See, three types of classification. Per diem sub, which will be employed through Insight. You have a long-term sub who is over ten consecutive days but under ninety calendar days. It's a long-term sub, and we'll work with Insight for those placements. Our full-time subs, who you approve many each month at the Personnel Actions, will be employed by the district. That is the end of our presentation. Thank you for your attention, and we hope that you will consider approving the contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Alluding to further questions, comments, Dr. Foster.
So I have a question for Insight. So when we have substitute teachers working with you, do you have a sense, so you say you work with thirty-five school districts, do you have a sense of how far substitute teachers are willing to commute? Do you, do you have like an average or some outstanding, like, oh, my gosh, we can get someone who wants to, you know, work in every district in Pennsylvania? Like, how does it, how does that work?
It differs by geography. It differs by state. Majority of the substitutes that work in your district or the surrounding districts are from that area or from that township. About eighty-five percent of those individuals are. If it's a long-term position, those individuals tend to commute, will take that longer commute. But typically, it's from the surrounding towns that send to your district.
Okay. And that really gets at your recruiting strategy. You're tailoring it to that reality that you perceive, that people are most likely to be from this area.
So it's going to be, it's really going to be twofold. One would be from the colleges and universities, those younger individuals that would be coming out into the profession. And then that's why we want to be present in district, to be at a football game, to be at a community event, because there are local individuals that do, maybe not have thought about it, or maybe have thought about it and haven't committed to it yet. If we can go get an outreach effort to those individuals and bring them into the program, that would be the goal as well.
Right. And I guess the request I would make, which is just, you know, a vague longing, is, to the extent that you can encourage people with diverse backgrounds to make the track up here, even if they're not currently living here, if they do well with the district, they can always relocate in the future. So, you know, your recruiting at colleges kind of gets to that, but also your work with other districts in the area where, you know, maybe if they're willing to get in the car a little bit, it could be a good thing for them and for us. So I just wanted, hopefully, you to, you know, keep some openness in your systems and processes for the possibility that people may be willing to, because we're so great that people will want to drive to come here.
I would agree with you. Council Rock's a phenomenal school district, and I do believe that people, it depends on the area and the school district, but I do believe people would commute further to work here than maybe some other school districts that are out there.
Mr. Grub.
Go ahead. Go, please. Mr. Cox, I, in looking at this agreement quickly, I don't see something, I don't see any prohibition in this contract, and I'm pleased if it is not present, that would prevent us from electing to convert someone hired initially on a per diem rate under this to a full-time staff. And there'd be no, no money due as a finder's fee or anything to Insight. Is that your understanding of this contract?
May I just add?
Yeah. That, I mean, that's the way I, well, let's hear what the vendor has to say.
It's one of our best recruiting tools, which I didn't get to, so thank you. If we can bring individuals into the program that can eventually move on to a full-time position in district, that word of mouth is the best recruiting tool that we have. We spend, we spend a ton of time, money, and energy recruiting. There's no penalty, there's no fee, we promote that.
And so I put it to you this way, we talked about soft costs, and we have cost avoidance. And I will, you know, while we may disagree on many things, I, Dr. Foster, I think this is one that you will, we will agree on. You were hinting towards the point about we may be able to get people to come and try our district as a, as a per diem, and then see that they like it and see that it's an agreeable, comforting sort of place. We've also looked, this, Taylor, about, and our professional staff as well, about how we can recruit better and maybe go for more candidates who might be from a minority category. So this sounds like a wonderful opportunity. It gives us a broader pitch. It allows some people to try us, not us, not only us to try them, but them to try us as staff. And we talked about those hidden costs, the soft costs that we wouldn't incur for hiring that I threw the number thirty thousand. We may have further soft costs. We avoid some, our recruitment might be able to be ameliorated through this. And we have a thirty or sixty-day out. I don't, I don't see why I would say no to this.
Thank you, Mr. Grub. Anyone else?
I just, sorry, Ms. Byalik.
No, please, go ahead.
I just have one comment and a question. I was going to opine that there is no non-solicitation or non-compete provision in the contract, so I was pleased to see that. I added a sixty-day termination for convenience provision, which the, which Insight was agreeable to. They had objection to my making the contract a non-exclusive obligation for reasons that are obvious. That's a business decision for the district. It seems fair enough to me, on balance, that this vendor will be the exclusive provider of substitute services, in light of the fact that there's a relatively easy way out for the school district in that unlikely event that the relationship deteriorates. The one thing that I didn't know until tonight was that there is a carve-out for long-term substitutes. And so since the contract speaks to Insight being the exclusive provider, and since I don't see a provision that speaks to the issue of a long-term sub, I'm wondering if we can just make a minor adjustment to the definition of substitute staff to clarify that. I don't think it needs to hold up the Board's approval of it tonight, assuming Insight indicates they're okay with that. I can just add it.
We are agreeable to that.
All right. Thank you.
So the motion should be made subject to solicitors.
That's fine, and I'll, I'll just not have Mr. Tate sign it until later in the week after I've had a chance to revise it.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Mr. Byalik?
Thank you. You know, I really enjoyed your presentation at the Finance Committee meeting, and I enjoyed it again tonight. I think, Ms. Taylor, you've been very clear of the need and even a frustration in trying to fill these positions. And I think Insight is probably a good partner for that. The, what I'm having trouble with is the cost. So where is the funding coming from, Bob?
The funding right now is coming from where we have substitute cost valued and their benefits in the budget right now. That'd be transferred from the salary and the benefit areas into a contracted area.
I wish we could quantify those soft costs that we're talking about and get, close that gap on that ninety-four thousand, ninety-seven thousand, whatever that number was. And I'd love to see this be, it seems to be a tremendous benefit for the district, but I'd really like to see it be cost-neutral, additional costs. So I'm not going to support it tonight for that reason, because I'm just concerned about what that's taking out of the classroom directly. I understand that it's going to be additional personnel, but I just, you know, I feel like maybe it's something we can do a little bit better ourselves if, if we can't see that soft cost benefit. Does that make sense, what I'm saying? So, so for me, without knowing really the cost benefit of that, I can't move forward with it.
Thank you, Mr. Byalik. Other comments, questions?
I'll make a comment. The number-one thing we have to do is educate children, and we're running classes with a principal jumping in at the last minute, not, so I completely, I couldn't agree with you more, because I think what you're saying, and I don't, if I'm wrong, jump right in, but we could spend that money with books or computers or something, you know, new math programs, something for the kids academically. I was convinced with the committee meeting that we're running classrooms with less than optimal people, and so I'm viewing as the extra spend, and this is why there's nine of us, different views. So don't take it personally, Mark. But I'm viewing the extra spend as actually investing in the kids in the classroom. So I struggle with exactly the same topic, choosing to look at it slightly differently.
So I, and, and I've been sitting here struggling with that same thought. Again, I just, I really want to, if we could just close that gap, it would, it would absolutely be a no-brainer for me. So, and I understand that's probably impossible to do, and I'm certain it'll pass tonight. I just want to say that, first of all, it was surprising to me that we have such a shortage of substitutes and shortage of teachers in general. And then at the committee meeting, we got off track with the discussion about absenteeism, which was unfortunate, but it was eye-opening, right? And as was Dr. Frazier's follow-up, so I'm glad we settled all that. But, yeah, I could really, you know, I'm sitting here going either way, but it just, I'd really like to, ninety-four, ninety-seven thousand dollars is not a small number, right? So for me, I would just like to close that gap more.
My hope is that all this conversation about shortage of teachers and, and students going into teaching piques the interest of some talented young people. It's a shame. It's a great opportunity. Other comments? If not, we'll have a roll call, though, please, Mr. Rice.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grub?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thorawort?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Byalik?
No. Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to number four, Mrs. Brooks, would you read the item, please?
I move to approve the purchase of the textbooks and resource materials for the 2017, 2018 school year, as contained in the attachments to this agenda, at a total cost not to exceed three hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents.
Second.
Comments, questions? We got an awfully good presentation on these textbooks at academic standards last week or the week before. For those who missed that committee meeting, the Board learned an awful lot about the textbooks, and I think just as important, the resource materials, particularly those that are now online. So while we're not having an extended discussion about this purchase right now, the Board did get a great education on these materials. And the other thing I wanted to note, we heard a lot from the, I guess they're curriculum coordinators that make the textbook purchases, and the negotiating that they do with the textbook Are there any questions or comments further? Hearing none, we'll record this. Motion is passing unanimously. Number five. Mr. Grub, would you read the motion, please?
I move to award... I move to approve the award to the Council Rock High School North Aditorium exterior wall repairs project bid, number 17-36, including alternates numbers one through seven, as contained in the attached proposals to CND Waterproofing Corporation at a total cost not to exceed $252,800, subject to audit.
Second.
Second from Ms. McKessy. Thank you very much. Mr. Taylor? Please, if you would.
Yes, these are the... This is the work associated with the foundation challenges at the... An auditorium at North and the wall repairs, the water infiltration, and some betterment to improve the exterior wall conditions, as we previously discussed at the last executive session.
Questions, comments, objections? Hearing none, we'll record. This motion is passing unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Foster, would you read number six, please?
I move to approve the renewal of the contract with Chartwells to provide food services for the 2017-2018 school year with a not-to-exceed deficit guarantee of minus $16,836, and lunch prices remaining the same as in the 2016-2017 school year.
Second.
Can I ask a point of clarification? When we talk about a deficit guarantee and show a negative number, it's two negatives make a positive. So it's actually just because of the way it's written, it should be at a deficit not to exceed $16,000. Should be a positive number, not a negative number. Bob?
If you look at it that way, yes.
Well, in accounting notation, putting it under parentheses means it's a negative number. And then we referred to it as a negative number before that. So I just wanna make sure the motion is correct. So I believe the motion should be amended to represent the number without parentheses around it. That would be a deficit of $16,836.
Well, the $16,836 is money coming back to the district.
No, it's not.
What... Okay, so what's that amount represent? I'm looking at Mr. Reinhardt.
I am too. I know the answer.
It means that they are guaranteeing that our revenues will be no more than $16,836 less than the expenses.
Said another way is not saying that our...
It's a deficit.
...liability on this will not exceed $16,386.
I think, in light of that, the motion reads fine.
The motion reads backwards.
It's my view.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
The motion is backwards.
Are there any other comments or questions, objections?
I have a question, yes. So looking at the contract, when we're talking about total in-school revenue, 3.1 million, 3137450, so we're essentially saying that Chartwells, that's what they're projecting to receive in revenue. And it can't cost the district any more than $16,000. We're passing that on, right? But to us, there's no additional cost beyond $16,000.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
So I will object to it because the notation is incorrect. The reference to a deficit and the accounting notation of a number in parentheses means that you are proving that we will receive $16,000, and that's not what the contract says. So I will object. Go ahead and call it. Do it, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Grub.
I agree.
Why don't we just amend the motion to remove the brackets from it?
I'll entertain that.
Well, the contract... The contract is fine.
The motion's wrong. That's my point.
Okay, okay.
Do you wanna just...
So you want the motion amended to remove the parentheses? Though that satisfy the concern?
How about we move the contract? We move to approve the attached contract.
That works.
So I take back my previous motion, and I say I move to approve the renewal of the contract with Chartwells to provide food services for the 2018 school year as described in the attached contract.
And...
Second.
A second. Thank you. Are we good?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Hearing no objections, we'll record. This motion is passing unanimously. And move on to the Solicitor's report. Mr. Cox, if you would, please.
I have very little to report tonight. There was no executive session to report. I'm happy to talk about the timeline for school closure hearings or anything related to that issue, but I'll leave that to the board. And that's all I have. Mr. Tate?
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Moving on, old business. Anyone? New business. Anyone? Committee reports. Academic standards, Ms. McKessy, please.
Yes. As Mr. Tate indicated, we met May 11th. We had a great meeting. We were joined by our curriculum coordinators from across the district, from across all grade levels, to review... Excuse me, to review textbooks and course materials. And I, for one, am very happy that we approved what we did tonight. It's been a while, and we had many materials and books that needed to be refreshed, and it was long overdue. So I feel very fortunate for that. We were also joined by Dr. Therese Grateful, and she came with two students from Council Rock High School South and Council Rock High School North, four students total, and they shared some great research that they have been working on in their honors. STEM... I know it's STEM, but it's a much lengthier project. But the kids were fantastic, and it was a great meeting. And next meeting is June 8th, and the majority of that meeting will focus on technology. In addition, Renee Devlin sent some information over. Thank you, Denise. I did receive that. And she is the District Science Coordinator, and she had some information she was hoping that we could pass along. She indicated that on Monday, students from all over the state presented their original science research projects at the state competition for the Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Sciences. Council Rock was well-represented, with 43 participants and all secondary schools participating. Twenty-three students received a first-place award, with Nicole Kusid, Laura Floyd, and Jessica Wang receiving a perfect score. In order to participate, the students had to get a first-place award at the regional competition held in February. So congratulations to all of those students, and a great testament to our program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKessy. Facilities Committee, Dr. Thorwart.
Yes, we met on May the 4th, discussed some of the usual topics, energy management, our facilities improvements, namely the middle schools, and had a lengthy discussion on our custodial services. That will be coming to the board soon, but not yet. We covered a lot of the other topics in our consent agenda and some of the board motions, so there was not much else to report there. Our next meeting is scheduled for June the 1st, but at this time, we've got an extremely light agenda, maybe handled with a memo, in which case, facilities can start... Or finance can start significantly early. So I'll put that out there now. The decision's not final, but it'll be a very brief meeting. That should pick up, Doug, probably middle of June when we start working on our capital projects. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Thorwart. Finance Committee, Ms. Thomas, please.
Yes, I wasn't able to make the last meeting, so I will defer to Dr. Thorwart momentarily. But I did want to announce that the budget form that was originally scheduled for tonight will be next Thursday night at 6:30, to be followed by policy. And the next Finance Committee meeting will be June 1st at... Well, modeling facilities with us. But as far as what happened on the May 4th meeting, Doc... Mr. Reinhardt? Dr. Thorwart?
Yes, we had Mr. Pelibran and Mr. Degler from Chartwells there. We discussed the contract and the items that we approved tonight. We also went over the preliminary budget and an update on the health care that we showed. We had some more savings with the health care, and I think our budget's in pretty good shape. We'll go over that again on the 1st, with board adoption on June 15th. Then we did go over the way the structure of motions have been written for certain bids, and we changed the way that is, and you saw that tonight. So I think that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. Policy Committee, Mr. Grub, please.
We have not had a policy committee. We have deferred the most recent policy because of absences and time for our attorneys to review some things. Our next policy committee is currently scheduled for next Thursday at May 25th. Matt has... We have some policies that are out right now with Eastburn and Gray. We are having one of the specialists, I think, Special Ed, review those policies because of the nature of them. I think the policy committee is predominantly around special education on May 25th. And so we will certainly enjoy the company of Dr. Lambert that evening. Please do. Always enjoy your company, Chuck. And it is, as I think most people know it, is something important to me, and I hope to have a good attendance. We do run that policy committee a little differently than some, because we do discuss the items, and we wind up taking public comment pretty much through that as they are generally individual items. You're welcome to participate. It is an open discussion, and creative and supportive input is always welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Grub, we're looking at 104 and 103.
I believe you are.
And 104 we'll have to you tomorrow, and then 103 early next week. I assume that works with your schedule.
As long as you get it 48 hours in advance of the policy meeting.
Fair enough.
Thank you, Mr. Grub. Thank you, Mr. Cox.
We'll post those to the...
Yes. Now... Okay, next up is the Ad Hoc Master Capital Planning Committee. Mr. Block is traveling on business, so I'm going to point out, first of all, that our next meeting is this Monday, coming Monday, May 22nd. I'm gonna take a minute or two to clarify, for the benefit of the public, the potential timeline of the board actions that are upcoming regarding master capital planning, particularly as it pertains to the possible closing of one or two elementary schools in the district. I was quoted accurately in the Courier-Times today regarding a possible vote at the board's next regular meeting, which is June 15th. But to be clear, that vote would not be a formal vote to close one or two schools. It could only be a motion to schedule a special public hearing for that purpose, because... And forgive me, but it's complicated. By state law, a special public meeting must be held to announce the intention to close a school building. And then there is a three-month waiting period before the final vote is taken, and we are required to provide a 15-day advance notice of that hearing. So bear with me. Here's a potential scenario. We will have the next master capital planning meeting this coming Monday, May 22nd. Then there are the three community forums, which are going to be June 5, 6, and 7. Those will be followed by the final master capital planning meeting of the year, which is June 12. I spoke with Andy Block today, and the way he put it, and I'm in complete agreement, is we're certainly hopeful that the majority of the board, at that point, after June 12, having fully reviewed all the available information and heard from the community directly, that we can provide some direction to the administration for proceeding. So it is possible that at the next regular board meeting in June, the board could agree to hold a special public hearing on the closure of one or two elementary schools. That hearing could not occur for at least 15 days, and perhaps immediately prior to our next regular monthly meeting, which would be July 20. So those are the dates, or just possibilities, but I wanted to share that potential timeline. So it lays out some steps that are dictated by state law. The next meeting of the Master Capital Planning Ad Hoc Committee will be this coming Monday, May 22nd. I hope that was clear.
Can I just add one comment tonight, if you wouldn't mind? I was asked by a member of the community today, and I know Wendy and I had this conversation, particularly with regard to those forums. This is a very, very busy month, I think, for everybody. And I know I personally will not be able to attend all three of the forums. Unfortunately, I believe it's Rolling Hills that is on the 7th. I will not be able to attend due to a work obligation. But somebody asked me if we would all be in attendance at all of the meetings. And I think it's just worth noting that that week would be, and it will be for our administration, four nights in a row. It's hard to carve all of that out, but I think I could speak for all of us to say that we're all gonna try and do the best we can. But I was asked how we will capture the information for the meetings that we're unable to attend.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I have a... I fully plan to come on Monday and was committed, and I, having urgent work situation, I will not be able to attend until the 22nd. These meetings are critically important to this community. We all feel that way, that I have to go to a work obligation, and that when they're here, they're at least recorded, so we can watch and listen. And I'm all for having them in the community, but I just... I think we need to just think about... It's a lot to think that all nine of us can make four meetings that week, every single night, and not have a work conflict. So my... You know, I'm just agreeing and saying it should be given some thought. Maybe you and Andy can talk about it, see what other options are, if there are any.
Options for recording?
Yeah. I don't think we need to video.
Right.
But at least have some kind of recording of it.
Good. I think that's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Either audio or minutes.
Right.
You know...
Something, yeah. Minutes would be it.
Or both, right.
Why not do what we do in the committee rooms and record them and put them on YouTube? I mean, again, we're talking about simple technology. So there's no reason we can't have recording. Matt, I don't know if you wanna chime in, but I understand it's a bigger area that you have to cover, unlike our committee room, but we should be able to have it on YouTube. I won't be at the June 6th meeting, I think, because of the work commitment, and that's Richborough Elementary, and that's unfortunate. I wouldn't wanna miss any of them, but I think we're all gonna have conflicts along the way somewhere.
Yeah.
So I think it is unreasonable to expect to have all of us there. So if we can, you know, go back and look at those meetings, listen to them on YouTube or watch them on YouTube, that'd be great.
I think even copious note-taking, as we've recorded other meetings in here, and if it's at least just minutes of some... What?
No, keep going.
You've got that look on your face, so go ahead.
You know, if I was an infant, that would mean something else. Yeah, I appreciate that we're gonna have them in the schools, you know, from my perspective. It's always difficult to cover those acoustically, and that's always been a challenge. So, you know, Matt, I don't know if we can run it back with just not video, but just wires back to... Back to a YouTube. You know, it's... I will tell you that, you know, unfortunately, I was traveling for business for a number of our forums. Having them available to listen to is vital. At least it was for me. You know, I... If you want good people working on a board, you're gonna get people who have business acumen and are in demand both for their business and personal lives, and that's what will happen. And being able to replay those meetings... I replay meetings I've sat through to catch parts I might have missed. So have to do something. Truthfully, a written transcript is not gonna have the same vigor that the auditory portion is.
I'd be up for it if we had to rent something. We have to rent a mic, and I mean, that's money, I get it, but if we don't... We don't have equipment, and you're thinking... money, I get it, but if we don't, we don't have equipment, and you're thinking it's equipment, and we could rent something even.
And I don't need to go high-end, because I would remember, Doctor, I think it was your introduction to our community where we had a tough time, you know, so I would be fine to be low-end. I'd love it to be live, but minimally, it needs to be recorded. And I think we have a capacity to record it for sure at any of our schools, even if it's just microphones and a recorder of some sort.
I'm glad you're sure, because I don't read MacSpace Quick that way.
I'm concerned about the layout of the room. I'm concerned about the public comment. I have to go to the schools. I'm assuming we'll be doing the cafeterias without chairs?
I tell you, constrain the way we sit. If you need to sit us on risers and behind each other to be able to hear the public comment, that's, the public comment's going to be the most important part. Our, we don't need a big dais.
If we give tables to the format with one spot, the public has to come into the studio, we can use the same format we've been doing. I have a question for you.
Good, we'll work on that. We'll discuss it with Mr. Block, and he's a master at running a tight meeting, so, yeah, if we're going to record it, we've got to make sure that we're capturing everything. So thank you, Matt. Middle Bucks Institute of Technology, Mr. Bylik, please.
So like our meeting tonight, we had a whole lot of student recognition at the MBIT meeting, and it was always, it's always very exciting, but we had folks from Skills USA, district competition, Skills USA state competitions, first-place winners, you know, second, third-place winners. We also had Pennsylvania Regional High School Computer Fair Competition, Greater Philadelphia Automotive Technology Competition winners, and American Welding Society winners. So it was very, very fun, exciting night. One of the times you walk in there and the place is absolutely packed, so a lot of fun. And then it was just regular business. But the upcoming meeting is, our next meeting is June twelfth, and our, can't call it graduation, we call it something else. I've lost it. Senior Recognition is Monday, June fifth, at six-thirty PM at William Tenon High School. Do you have anything to add, Dr. Postor? Okay? Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Bylik. Bucks County Intermediate Unit Number Twenty-two, Ms. Brooks.
So ordinarily, the IU would have met this week, but because of the primary, the meeting is actually next week. But I just wanted to share two little tidbits of things that have happened in May through the IU. One was that they organized a STEM design challenge for other schools across the county, and over five hundred Bucks County students participated. Students worked in groups of four to answer a challenge using Connex, the toilet unit of Connex. Each team was to create a new amusement park ride that was environmentally friendly, and their task was to provide a narrative and a blueprint for their design. The IU organized this challenge, it's actually a statewide competition, and they organized the Bucks Schools. And there was a team from Richborough Elementary who won the most environmentally friendly award in grades four and five, so that was pretty cool. Also, May is Better Speech and Hearing Month. The IU has a birth-to-age-twenty-one focus in their effort to support students in the areas of speech and hearing therapies, and I was pretty amazed at the extent to which they offer services. There are teams for the following: brain injuries, feeding support, bilingual support, augmentative and assistive communication technology, speech-language pathology, hearing support, C-print support, which is voiced-to-text support services, sign language interpreters. And so collectively, all of these groups work together and are such a vital key to helping the communication, listening, language, and literacy skills for students in our county. So I will report on next week's meeting and our next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Moving on to our second public comment session, is there?
Can I talk about Council Rock Education Foundation?
Oh, I'm sorry.
If we didn't hear enough about them tonight. It was Creftmas tonight, right? Gave out a lot of money, it was really exciting. You like that, Creftmas? Can we call it that? No? Okay. I didn't get the applause I was expecting. So we all know the great things Creft does, and so, and we experienced that tonight. Next week, next Tuesday, is Council Rock Night at the Ballpark, so we have special tickets available. Go to councilrockeducationfoundation.org, and we are, it's the Trenton Thunder against the Fighting Phils. It's a, always a good night. And upcoming on May twenty-fifth is the Adolescent Brain at seven AM to nine, that's not right, that's not right, at seven to nine at Council Rock North Auditorium. And that's part of their Raising Great Kids Speaker Series. Again, you can get information at creeducationfoundation.org. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Bylik. Pardon me.
That's okay.
Our second session of public comment.
My name is Eric Stevens. I live in Wrightstown. This is my first time addressing this board. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for their service to the community, and I realize that we're all making a sacrifice to do this for the benefit of our students. I moved to Wrightstown with my wife and my daughter in September two thousand and fifteen. One of the reasons I moved to Wrightstown is so that I have the benefit of sending my daughter, who is now three and a half years old, to Wrightstown Elementary School. I understand that it's one of the schools that is under consideration for closure. I realize that is under budget concerns for many, for many of the school closures, but it is not always about the budget. It's about what is best for the students and what is fair. And I also, I think it is fair that every township have its own elementary school, have a sense of community for those, for those students. And also, Wrightstown is a great elementary school, and would also, why not expand that school and bring other, and bring other students into that school? So I look forward to the master planning meetings, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming.
Nancy Carol Moutambe. I think there's two things missing in the capital planning presentations. One is people have no idea what the cohort survival rate is and how effective it is in taking what the trend is. You know, it doesn't go out and measure, you know, houses or whatever. It's a, how do you survive from one grade to the next grade to the next grade? So when you move up, you're going to graduate like over nine hundred kids in a couple days, and they'll all be gone, and according to this, there's only, there's only, might be like about a hundred less eleventh graders. So in order to sustain the numbers of the district, you have to have influx in every grade, because the eleventh grade's not going to, you know, replace all those students they graduate. So I think there needs to be some explanation of that. And the second is, when you measure efficiencies, the way a building is used, if the building is used inefficiently, then you don't have the proper measurement. And what I'm saying to that fact is, I'm holding up two thousand and six, two thousand and seventeen enrollment sheets, and we've lost over twenty-five elementary regular ed sections in the last ten years, over twenty-five. We had classes for those kids, and you're going to say, oh, they were in trailers. They weren't in trailers because a lot of schools didn't have trailers, and other schools, we replaced all their trailers, and then some. Like we had eight at Goodno, and we put eleven more on the side, took one away for their front office, and then for some reason, made the stage a room by buying a big gigantic window. I don't know how that ever happened, but we added, we put a new front entrance at Salt Finestone, and we put up two classrooms there, we replaced the trailers, and then we gained the old office. So we made that a bigger school than it was ten years ago. So what I would like to see is all the regular-sized classrooms, which I think the state considers anything above six sixty or six fifty, six twenty-five as a classroom for twenty-five kids, that have, do not have sections in them. When I go through and count, I see schools that have large-sized classrooms that do not have sections in them. So once you look at a school and you take out the cafeteria, and the gym, and the art room, and the music room, and all the specialty rooms, the rest are classrooms. And once you put the regular ed in there, then the rest go to small group instruction. And if we're putting five kids, three kids, four kids, twelve kids in a classroom that was built for twenty-five, we're inefficient. It's the same thing, the body of the school is probably efficient because our classroom size policy, can't put in any more than thirty, can't put in any more than twenty-five, so that gives it a good efficiency rate. But it doesn't count all the schools that have had at one time twenty-five, thirty kids in, and now there's something else in there. And I found out in Goodno, I was part of Chancellor Goodno trailers when there were eleven hundred kids altogether, and as soon as the population went down.
Mrs. Carol, excuse me.
Okay, teachers that.
That's four minutes.
Thank you for that four minutes. Have a nice weekend.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? If not, oh, I'm sorry.
You mentioned the meetings, you mentioned the meetings at the schools. I'm looking at the calendar, you have, those meetings are not listed on this. When are those?
I mentioned June five, six, and seven.
June five, yes. Okay. And that's it? All those are at different?
Yes.
Schools?
Yeah, June fifth is at Wrightstown.
Okay.
Seven PM.
Okay.
June sixth, Richborough Elementary, seven PM, and June seventh, Rolling Hills, at seven PM.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for asking. No further public comment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No, Board Comment.
Pardon?
Board Comment?
Board Comment. Very good.
Yeah, okay. So I wanted to give my colleagues on the board a heads-up. I had some interactions with the press, and so I wanted to give them some of my perspective on serving on the school board for some time, and so it's likely that they may come to you for your perspective on my perspective. And so what I wanted to convey, what I conveyed in a pretty lengthy discussion earlier today, which I can't recapitulate it because it was quite long, with a lot of questions back and forth, is my perspective is, school boards are pretty powerful entities. You know, the school code was written long ago, but it gives us powers to enter into litigation, to open and close schools, to take property, to hire and terminate teachers and administrators, curriculum, textbooks. It's a lot on our plate, and since that original legislation in Pennsylvania nineteen forty-nine, we've piled a bunch of stuff on there. So for instance, federal law has given us an entirely new segment of activity in special education with associated litigation, and, you know, anything, for instance, associated with computers or Title IX, and I think all of us would have a list of things that are completely new since nineteen forty-nine. But another aspect of that is just the sheer size of school districts. So, you know, you look at a district like ours with around eleven thousand children, two-hundred-and-thirty-five million dollar budget, that's not an entity that was walking the streets in nineteen forty-nine in Pennsylvania. And also, I've been reflecting as I try to get folks to volunteer to serve on a school board, it is extremely hard. I've known since December that I was going to leave this district. I've talked to a lot of folks about serving, and you find many people that are great people with great talents, and they hear what the time commitment is, or they watch a meeting and they say they can't take it on. And as I reflect and as I talked with the press today, I was kind of contrasting what happens in a municipality, where for instance, you might have someone who lives in a municipality who's an architect or a general contractor, and they may say, hey, I'll serve on the planning commission. You know, it's a pretty important, pivotal decisional body for a township, and, and they'll make a big contribution to that. But the school board version of that is someone says, hey, you're doing a bunch of facilities work, I'm an architect, I'm a general contractor, and then in some sense, the school board entity says, that's great, you're going to spend almost none of your time on that, because we've got transportation, we've got labor contracts, we've got all this other stuff. And so it makes it very hard for someone like that to really focus their contribution, even though they want to. And so in a nutshell, what I said as I spoke to the press today is that I personally think, and I've said this to legislators starting last December, I think it's worth thinking about what the design of school boards are, and how do we make them so that they more effectively engage the community? How do we redesign the system that was originally designed in nineteen forty-nine to be more effective? Now, the bad part of having an interaction like that with the press is you've got to give examples of where you think it's failing, where balls are being dropped. And so I gave them multiple examples of things where I think that we and many, many other school districts in Pennsylvania don't do well. And that's the way it goes. If you want to make a case as to why change is needed, you've got to give them some examples. So it's nothing personal, as they say. I really think that school boards could be better designed, and it's a conversation worth having. So look for that in your future. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Postor. Is there other board comment? Motion to adjourn? We're adjourned.